Am I good on my volume or whatever over here?
You're not getting any feedback, so it should be okay.
Yeah.
So long.
How are you doing?
Okay.
Good.
Do you have to do your role?
Somebody just got in.
Little bit.
It's kind of.
Yeah.
Same.
Different.
Exactly the same, but just completely different.
Okay. This should not be doing that.
Right?
Right?
Yeah.
No. Trying to save this photo. Says open a document view.
Okay.
Maybe Chelsea can't attend because she's on the east coast where that storm is rat dumping.
Yeah.
Gowns and gowns.
Oh, yeah, she's.
Tropical storm Debbie.
Yeah, she's either on the, she's in the, like the Outer Banks, yeah.
Just, yeah, just hit Hilton head like it's, I think it rained twenty inches in.
Yeah.
Eighteen hours or something.
Yeah.
Just a lot.
Wow.
Twenty inches in eighteen hours.
So.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah. Gators in the streets.
Hey, if Chelsea doesn't join us, we don't have a quorum.
I know, I need Joe.
Or Joe. Or Jeffrey.
Jeffrey's mom just got out of surgery.
She just got out of surgery.
Come on, Joe. Come on, Joe. So he shows up sometimes a couple minutes after five, so. Is he gonna walk over or is he gonna zoom?
Should I go over to his office?
Yeah, right?
Joe, come on, man.
Actually, don't.
We need a quorum.
You can almost see it.
Ah, Chelsea.
Yay, okay, perfect.
Quorum we have.
Okay, one second here.
First one.
Uh, welcome everyone. It's Tuesday, August sixth. And this is the regular meeting for the Picking County Planning and Zoning Board. And we have present Chelsea, Jasmine, Doug, and myself. Um, and this evening we have a, we'll start with, uh, are there any commissioner comments? Okay. Planning staff comments?
No.
Bonnie, do we have any members of the public?
There are no members of public online.
All right, well then we'll get right to the public hearing. Aspen Ski Company, um, cell phone tower master plan, activity envelope, and site plan review.
All right.
Okay.
Go for it.
I start, I go first.
Exactly.
But I was saving your, um, cell tower thing, so I'm a little. Here we go. Um, so for the record, I am Leslie Lamont, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. The application before you is a request from, um, the Aspen Skiing Company and, um, the Forest Service uh, to amend the ski rec master plans for Aspen Mountain, Aspen Highlands, and the Buttermilk Mountain. Uh, they're seeking to install thirteen cellular transmission sites on, in eleven locations. And as part of that, uh, amendment to the master plan, we're also looking at activity envelope and site plan review for each of the sites. And the activity envelope and site plan review also includes the trenching that is required to bring in the power and the fiber optic, um, to the sites. And I want to share my screen with you. So you saw this in the application. Um, but, and the application was so big, I had to break it into multiple parts for you guys in your packet, like part A, one through five, and B and C. But this map was in the application and, um, each of the little yellow dots, uh, is the location, uh, for each of the cellular sites. Um, an amendment to the master plan requires a two-step review process, so the P and Z will consider this application and then make a recommendation to the board of county commissioners. The public hearing, which requires public notice, will occur at the B O C C. Matt Keeling is here.
Chad, what's your last name?
Cumbeer.
Cumbeer and Chad Cumbeer, hi.
Hi.
Um, are here as well, and I'm gonna let Mac walk through each of the sites with you and the details of each of the sites. And when, I thought what we do is when we get to each of those sites, we can talk about the environmental hazard constraints that were considered for each of the sites rather than talk about that, um, um, globally. Um, after the packet went out, there were three letters of support that, um, Mac provided to me. They're all in support of the project. We got a letter from Five Trees Metro District. We got a letter from the Picking County Sheriff's Office. And we got a letter from Hot Aspen Highlands Commercial Metro District. And those will be added, um, to the record. And, um, let's see, I need to share another screen with you. Um. I am sharing, I know that. Okay. Um, so, the, do I have to stop share to go to another one?
Yeah, because you selected just the screen instead of the window, yeah, sorry.
So I just want to just refresh for you guys the, the text language in our code that you'll be looking at. So you're looking at, um, the, this ski rec master plan, so all the uses on each of the ski mountains are, uh, reviewed, approved, and adopted by a master plan. And we are amending each of those master plans. Um, e- each of the master plans did talk about, um, cellular transmission sites in the master plans, but there were no specifics for those sites. And, um, the, each of the Buttermilk and the Aspen Mountain master plans, um, talk about inactivity and use allowed year round for cellular sites. But the plans also require further review for anything, uh, taller than twenty-eight feet. And as you've seen in the application, the monopoles range in height from forty feet to, um, a hundred feet. The Aspen Highlands Master Plan identifies, um, these transmission sites as uses and activities allowed by right all year. However, again, because the towers exceed twenty-eight feet in height, um, we're looking at, um, further review. Um, and the other requirements with regard to, um, the amendment to, um, development and, um, development applications and permits. Um, staff found that the, um, this proposal is consistent with the previous approvals because the previous master plans did, um, contemplate, um, cellular transmission sites. Um, installation of these transmission sites does not change the proposed use of the development. It just doesn't change it between residential, commercial, or tourist accommodations. It's just an accessory use to operating the ski area. Doesn't change the basic character of the approved use of the land. Again, we're looking at this through, um, amendment process to consider um, visual appearance and how they're operated. Um, staff did not consider this a new land development activity. Does not increase offsite impacts in the surrounding neighborhood. In fact, the towers themselves, um, do not affect adjacent neighborhoods. The closest tower to a neighborhood. Um, there's about three, I'd say. The Buttermilk Facilities Maintenance.
Yeah.
Um, and then, um, the base of Highlands.
Yeah.
Um, is adjacent to the, you know, the surrounding condos at the base of Highlands. It does not endanger public health, safety, or welfare. And we're looking at all the various standards in the code to, um, um, as, as part of this review, particularly activity envelope and site plan. That's where we get into a lot of our standards of the code that we're looking at with this review. There's no need for onsite parking. Utilities are going to be brought to each of the cellular sites. And it does not decrease, um, increase the floor area by five percent or decrease the open space. The cabinets themselves would not be considered, um, an item that we would calculate as floor area on the site. So, one of the, one of the things that we have to look at are the land use policies in, uh, the code, chapter one, which there's a lot of. But I, um, identified and, and provided the applicant and staff response in the memo. But the one thing that I wanted to point out that this section kind of forces us to look at is how does this project comply with our comprehensive plans? And, um, so in 2023, the comprehensive plan, um, was updated, and I quote from the plan that, um, the county encourages adequate regional community, community telecommunication facilities. Um, the part of this project is, uh, within the Western Maroon Planning Area, the WOMP. Um, the base, this is the base of Buttermilk. Um, maintain and encourage a Buttermilk in as, at Aspen Activity Node as a lodge ski recreation area. The Buttermilk proposals are also within, um, the U G B, so they're captured within the Asbury Community Plan. Um, the Maroon Creek Planning Area, those sites are, um, Highlands Vehicle Maintenance Facility and Cloud Nine. Those are within the, uh, boundaries of that caucus area. Um, the Maroon Creek Caucus, in their plan, they really want anything that happens at Aspen Highlands to be considered as an amendment to the master plan. And that, again, is what we're doing today. And we'll also go, um, to the B O C C. The Castle Creek, um, master plan, again, Aspen Highlands is subject to additional planning and review through the master plan development. East of Aspen, um, that is the Gondola Building. All the proposed cell towers on Aspen Mountain are within the East of Aspen Independence Pass Planning Area. And this, um, planning area, uh, points to, again, that using the ski rec master plan process as something to, that's the vehicle to evaluate the proposals. Finally, you guys adopted the Al Creek Master Plan in July. And, um, I, in that master plan, telecommunications, infrastructure, towers, and equipment should be subject to scenic view protection area review and standards in the Picking County Land Use Code. And there's a lot in this application about scenic view and scenic impact. And that's why I want Mac to really dive into each of these sites for you guys, so you can see how they've evaluated that. Um, there's a section in the code that we have to address when it comes to a wireless, um, communication. And, um, you can see that we addressed each one of, um, those, uh, standards. In particular, uh, we had a really good referral comment from Jeff Krueger, our Director of Telecommunications. And in his, um, email to me, he talks about, um, the importance of having kind of a more comprehensive, uh, cell coverage, not only that's important for all of the mountains, but connecting to the Sheriff's Department, connecting to first responders, and, um, Aspen Valley Hospital. Um, and then activity envelope and site plan review. So this was kind of, I thought, kind of the meat of this application um, review because it's environmental hazards. And these are the sections that, um, we focused on, the applicant focused on in their application, and then what we focused on um, during our review. And that's what I thought we could make sure that we cover in detail as Mac goes through, um, each site. Not every cell site hits all of these. Um, for example, Wildlife Habitat is only, um, the Cloud Nine cell tower, but we can talk about that, uh, with you all. And in the end, I'll turn it over to Mac now unless you guys have any questions for me. But, um, we can talk about the resolution in the end, and also Jeffrey Woodruff could not be here today, but he sent, um, me a bunch of questions that I did get some answers to, um, that we can go over, um, when Mac is done.
Great. Do any, um, board members have any questions before the applicant begins their presentation?
I'm, I'm thinking that Leslie's table of sites and heights is not exactly the same as the applicant, because there were some changes as we went through, is that? Didn't we get rid of, you changed the gondola to two poles or something, but the rest of these, these are all sixties and mostly sixties, right? There's one hundred foot. Is that what I read in it? Is, is this is the final application as far as heights?
Yes.
One, Leslie, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Mm-hmm.
That was.
Okay, I will stop sharing. And then you can go.
Okay. All right, I will start sharing then. Share the screen, there we go. Um, thank you, Leslie. I really appreciate all your hard work so far, um, and the site visit was educational for everybody and a lot of fun. Um, and thank you for, uh, hearing us today. Uh, Matt Keeling, Vice President of Non-Planning. Um, and Chad Cumbeer, uh, best title in our company, I think, the Vice President of Cybersecurity and IT Infrastructure. So, um, we've got, uh, I'll be dealing, um, today, or we'll both be presenting, but, um, you know, Chad is really the expert in the, how the network works, how the propagation of the cell towers will be, some of the, the technical aspects of it, whereas my role is more on the land planning, the construction aspects, the utilities, that kind of thing. So, um, and then we also have Eric Newmeyer, um, who is a project, uh, what is your official title, Eric? I should know this.
Running and Development Manager.
Yeah, and Eric, Eric has been, um, instrumental in the creation of, uh, the almost five hundred page application um, that, uh, hit this week's packet. And, um, yeah, really just appreciate all of his work and, uh, de- attention to detail throughout this whole process. So. Um, all right, so, uh, just before we get into the nuts and bolts, a couple of these things will be, uh, kind of redundant on what Leslie just uh, mentioned, but just really wanted to, you know, hit home that this is consistent. Um, and, uh, this application and the amendment to the master plans, this fits in, uh, the ski rec, uh, master development plan, um, that was approved for Aspen Mountain in twenty nineteen. Up the master plan for Buttermilk, that was approved in twenty thirteen, and the Highlands Master Plan that was approved in one thousand nine hundred and seven. Um, each, uh, of those three master plans identify wireless communication facilities as used as allowed all year, and each, um, mountain currently has, uh, different communications and antennas and devices on them. Um, so this is, uh, consistent with that. Uh, this is also consistent with the twenty twenty-three Picking County Comprehensive Plan. Um, the county encourages adequate regional and community telecommunication, telecommunications facilities to serve the needs of governments, businesses, and citizens of Picking County while avoiding or minimizing any negative impacts associated with telecommunications facilities. Um, we believe that this application and this pro- and these projects, uh, comply and are consistent with the comp plan stated goal. And, um, just really just are grateful for the staff recommendation. Um, we agree with it wholeheartedly and um, we hope that, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the P O C C in the future, uh, agree with that. So, um, other things to note, uh, where, because it's, uh, we have private land, we have Forest Service land, public land, and we have the county, which is overall there. Um, so for Aspen Mountain, Aspen Highlands, and Buttermilk, we reached out to, uh, a few different organizations. The Picking County Sheriff, uh, we reached out, uh, to Aspen Highlands because that, it was our opinion that the Tower at the Base of Highlands was the, um, as Leslie said, the closest to the general public. The majority of them are pretty high up on the hills and are more associated with the skiing population and the hiking population. Um, and so we reached out to the Base of Highlands Metro District as well as high, as well as Five Trees. Because, uh, they'll have a good access to seeing the, uh, tower over at Tahack, whereas Highlands would be able to see that one in Highland Space. Um, and, uh, we also had some positive, uh, meetings with, um, the, uh, uh, I'm sorry, draw a blank, um, with, uh, Mount Rescue. And they, uh, basically said that, um, they followed in line with Picking County Sheriff recommendations, and they didn't do public statements like that. So that's, uh, but we had a very positive meeting with them, and they also appreciated the plan. Um, as Leslie said a minute ago, this was referred to multiple caucuses, and it also complies with those caucus plans. Um, so far that I've at least seen and, you know, public comment is, uh, yet to come, but we haven't seen anything negative as of yet from those, uh, organizations. Um, and then with regards to our current Forest Service application, they accepted our project, uh, which is the full project that is being discussed here today. Um, and they are on, underway with, uh, NEPA, Environmental View. Um, so a lot, some of the concerns or some of the, uh, site constraints that are identified in our, um, in the application will be more thoroughly vetted and, um, studied in detail by, through the forest and their NEPA process. And then just as a footnote, um, none of these towers are in discussion today or in the application, but the town of Snowmass Village last year, uh, approved six cellphone towers, um, of similar styles, heights, uh, screening, et cetera, as we'll be, we learned a lot from those applications, those public meetings and discussions. And frankly, we modified our application before ever submitting it to the county, um, uh, after receiving those comments. And so this application that we're reviewing today has a lot of those same techniques for screening, has a lot of the same techniques for utilities, et cetera. Um, so, yeah. So, uh, the need, um, basically, the cell phone coverage is, uh, on not only the mountains, but in much of the county, um, is, uh, is, is poor at best. Um, once you get on to Aspen Mountain, once you get on the Highlands, uh, it's very difficult to get a phone call out, get a text out in many locations on the hill. Um, as far as the number of people that are either in the resort or in the back country that the cell coverage will improve on to help with life safety, to help with general communication, um, it's, it'll be a big change for, um, much of the land. Um, and we've got some maps that can kind of show some of the propagation as studies that have been done. Um, having improved cellular coverage, uh, it would extend beyond the hills, like I said a second ago, and it would also, uh, assist in many areas that have, um, you know, cellphone coverage that often gets overloaded because there's too many people in the network. So this would help with capacity and this would help with, with distance. All right, Chad?
Yeah, so, uh, this, this project has been going on for quite some time. Uh, we, we've worked with number of the, some of the biggest players in the cell, you know, tower installation business, um. And really, like, as we went through that process, they determined, uh, that it wasn't profitable enough for them. Uh, it took a significant investment, and, uh, it just didn't pencil out. Uh, for us, you know, we look at it a little bit different. Uh, we're not looking at it from a profitability standpoint. We're looking at it from a guest experience and a public safety. And we feel that that, you know, outweighs, you know, the financial investment that we need to make, uh, on this project. Um, in, in addition to that, you know, we already have quite an extensive fiber optic network on our mountains, uh, that we've invested in for our own use. Um, and in, in number of circumstances, you know, we can make use of that, uh, for these cell towers.
Thank you. All right, so just saw a map of, uh, where the towers are located. And, um, we'll go into each one of those sites on a very specific basis in a little bit. But this is the, this is the updated table, Doug, um, that shows, you know, exactly where the, the name of the tower as we're dubbing it, uh, how tall the tower or towers are at each site, and what our proposed, uh, construction schedule would be, and then what the finish on those towers would be. And basically, with each one of those sites, we took a lot of care to not make the towers too tall so that they're a complete eyesore. We, um, and that's why you see two towers in some locations versus one. And that's because, um, one, in order for one tower to work, it would have to be way too tall, like the Silver Queen, uh, Gondola Tower was originally proposed as an eighty-foot tower after our site visit with staff. Um, we, uh, we, again, took a lot of care and frankly, uh, it was, it was suggested that we shrink it and possibly do two towers and figure out a way that that'll work and not change the propagation study. So in areas where that's possible or necessary, um, in most areas that we're talking about, there's tree canopies. We have the forest around that'll do the majority of the screening. Um, but there's some areas where that just wasn't possible in order to have, because it's a complete system, and each tower is working with the other tower to get, uh, to get the coverage, if you will. Um, we took lots of care with the, uh, public view sheds. We'll go into that in a little bit, um, as well. Uh, so all of those are the Picking County Identified View Sheds and the locations. We literally drove up and down the road. We identified exactly where we think you'll be able to see it, and then what that impact will be. Most of the time, we're talking about things that are, you know, a mile plus away from the, those view sheds. Um, and, or they're, um, yeah, so it just, they would be a very small blip, um, but as far as if you notice them or not, you kind of have to look. Uh, we took great care with the tower finish. You'll see that we have three different finishes that are being proposed on the table here, and that, those tower finishes are an attempt to, uh, blend in best with the scenery around it. So the galvanized finish at the Silver Queen Building is, it's literally right next to a metal building. All this, all the lift towers, uh, throughout the scaries are galvanized, so we called it, a galvanized pole would be best for the Silver Queen. Whereas the, um, the copper sulfate is a color that we feel blends in well with, uh, an evergreen forest. And a honeycomb, uh, tower, we feel blends in well with an Aspen forest. So that's the reason that you see different finishes, um, in the areas. And this is, uh, this was consistent with the colors that were selected by the Town of Snowmass, uh, Council and staff over there. So. Um, and then accessibility, uh, you can't just put a, putting a tower in the middle of a forest, um, that's away from roads, it's away from utilities, just isn't intelligible, and it's more just, we, we tried to be as light of touch. So if something is placed inside a forest, it's adjacent to a road, or there was an old work road that used to be there that, uh, has been graded and, uh, disturbed previously. So previous disturbance areas are, uh, were key in the identification of many of these sites. Um, we've said it before, thirteen cell towers at eleven sites, and we're hoping to, uh, build these out over a four-year period. All right, Chad?
Uh, I'm doing this one? Sure. All right.
Yeah.
You got it. It's fair enough. Uh, yeah, you know, we're, we're building these sites, uh, to have the ability to support up to four carriers at each site. Uh, those, that does include then cabinets, uh, where the, the carriers can install their equipment. So they have, you know, antennas that you install on the tower. Uh, then they also have equipment that is installed, uh, in the, in the racks, so to speak. Uh, we do, we are required to use, uh, ice bridges, uh, that helps protect primarily the fiber optic cable uh, as it runs from the tower over to, uh, the cabinets. uh, as it runs from the tower over to uh, the cabinets. Um, I guess you can have really the rest of that is more in, in your realm.
Yeah, and then, then the rest is, and we'll go through these on kind of an individual basis, but um, when you're thinking about uh, each site, like Chad said, has a tower uh, which will require a foundation. Um, we're literally in the process of building one of those towers over in Snowmass right now. And the foundation of that tower, they all vary depending on the height of the tower. But that tower foundation is a twelve by twelve concrete slab. The adjacent cabinets um, are literally on a s- four individual six by twelve concrete slabs. So with about a foot in between, so the workers can get uh, get between the cabinets. The cabinets themselves are roughly six feet tall. Um, and uh, just because I know this will come up later and feel free to ask it again later. Forgotten because I know I could be long-winded sometimes. Um, we are not planning on fencing around uh, these locations. Uh, during the winter, our ski patrol will put up fencing if things are in a hazardous area for the general public, so they'll put up some, some fence or some rope just uh, for the skiing public. Um, and these do not have, these are all connected to Holy Cross Primary Power. Um, we are not uh, incorporating any backup power for these cell towers. The Holy Cross Network is extremely reliable and it's very rare if we um, ever lose power in, on more than one mountain every time. Um, or in more than one zone every time, frankly. Like if the power goes out at the sun deck, we still have power at the base. If the power, you know, things like that. So um, that's uh, I know those things will be asked in a little bit, so.
Clarification?
Yes.
Question? You said six by twelve concrete pad, not per cabinet, all the cabinets will sit on that six by twelve.
Each carrier would get a six by twelve concrete pad.
Okay.
So there if, so the tower has
Basically.
Yeah, it's basically, so that would be
Those were around the big one in the middle?
Yeah, and, and Doug, depending on the site plan, depending on how it lays out. It's either long and not that deep.
Yeah.
Or it's deep and not that long, but it's, it's a combination of basically twelve foot wide for uh, the pads, if you will. Um, like it's basically, it could be as small as twelve by twenty-four. Um, or and then plus the tower pad, which is roughly, it, it goes between ten by ten to fifteen by fifteen. Is what, is what we've seen. Yeah. Okay. So where are these towers? Um, so we'll just kind of go through this. Um, if uh, we can see my mouse here. So Buttermilk Base is our first tower and this is the site of an existing uh, tower which is on a, it's, it's a shorter tower that is on a, uh, it's on a trailer, is that right? Uh, is that the cult or is that the?
What?
The cow?
There's one really short tower and then the other installation is on, actually on the building.
Yeah.
And we only have two carriers at that site today.
Second tower location would be uh, at Thai Hack. Um, this is not at the lift base, uh, as it's described here. Um, and yeah, the pictures later, we'll, we'll go into a little more detail on that. And then this one is in the, in, in the adjacent woods to the Cliff House Restaurant. Um, going over to Highlands, uh, this is Aspen Highlands Base, this is uphill of the exhibition and the Thunderbolt Lift. Um, the Aspen Highlands Vehicle Maintenance Shop. The vehicle maintenance shop is something that's tucked away pretty well, that's uh, below the merry-go-round restaurant. Um, that's the closest thing of note, and then the uh, Cloud, Cloud Nine Top Terminal. And this is actually below the Cloud Nine Restaurant. So, as it goes, as it goes, then we have Bell Mountain Base, this would be adjacent to the Bell Mountain Base, uh, the Chairlift. Ruthie's Base, um, this is one of those that uh, at one point in time was fairly, it was in the woods adjacent to Ruthie's and then we moved it. It's actually at the top of the Aztec Ski Run now. Um, and Ajax Express, this is below the Ajax Express Lift. Bell Mountain Chair Top is um, it's uphill of the top of the Bell Mountain Chair and then Silver Queen Gondola Building, which is on the backside of the Silver Queen Building. All right, back to chat.
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, we're billing this out to support up to four carriers. Uh, the carriers in play are the big three, uh, as well as uh, Dish Network, also known as Echo Star, the those companies merged and uh, they are looking to penetrate the cellphone network or the market rather. Um, and are, are now a player in the space. Um, you know, the carriers are required to get all their permitting that they need uh, to install their antennas and equipment. Uh, that's primarily like FCC uh, approvals are required, uh, which is a big component of that. Uh, these are a couple of propagation maps, they're, they're a little difficult uh, to read, uh, but really what it's depicting there is you have your low band or your lower frequency, um.
Let me go up for a second, Chad, just, I, I, I agree, these are difficult to read, let me just provide some context. Where the, this group of red dots is, that is Aspen Mountain. Where this group of red dots is, that is Aspen Highlands. And then this area over here is Buttermilk. So City of Aspen, down there, this is going Down Valley. And this is going up towards Independence.
Thanks, Mac, that's
Yeah.
Super helpful. Uh, your, your lower band, um, your lower band frequencies uh, are really just limited to mostly like call, text, uh, very, very low bandwidth. Uh, but as such, the signal travels further. Um, and so that's where, that's kind of our minimum standard of what we're looking to have within our skiris is the ability to call and text. Uh, once you get into the higher frequencies such as your mid-band, uh, you start to get more bandwidth and they can handle uh, more people connected uh, at a given time or like we're in areas of like high congregation, uh, you need to have mid or high band to be able to have enough capacity uh, for those people. And obviously, as you can see there, that signal does not travel as far. Um, also mentioned here and then what we've, you know, mentioned before is that with uh, in particular, the low band case, you can see that that, you know, extends kind of well uh, beyond uh, the ski area into town and things like that, uh, with, with this propagation map.
All right, and only thing I would add on that is um, some of the requirements that uh, we've been talking to the carriers about uh, includes that the towers would have uh, up to five G capability. Um, that five, what you're seeing there on the lower map, the mid-band propagation is uh, representative of three G and four G coverage, roughly.
Mostly, yeah, um, you know. Yeah, you would, that's not including the high bear, the, the high band frequencies.
Yeah, so, so there would be a third map, if you will, um, that would be the five G or the high frequency or high band propagation, which would be even more localized.
And, and it appears from the table there that the green is better serviced than blue, it goes down.
That's correct.
Yeah. We don't see red, which is the best, but the green is better than blue.
Right, thank you. Yep. Yeah, and, and to Chad's point, you know, one of the stated goals of private ski company is that no matter if, if you're on the mountain and you get hurt and you need to call ski patrol, you're able to and or send a text, you're able to. Um, so that's the, the low band propagation map that you're seeing there really does, shows the, kind of the completion of that, that internal goal at least.
Right.
All right. So scenic protection, exhibits and site constraints. So this is where we will start going in on a site-by-site basis and um, literally everybody, please, like this is intended to be a, like, back and forth. So if you have like while we're looking at this certain picture, if you've got something, um, let's just talk, okay?
Then can I ask a question again? The, the, the map of the low and the mid, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand it.
No problem.
Um, how many towers are going to be low band coverage and how many will be mid-band coverage?
Good question. So every tower will um, broadcast low bid and high band.
Okay. And what's the status now of the towers? It's just low or?
Um, yeah.
Like, I guess mid is not as good as the low band because it's, low band is spread out in more directions though. At the picture, it's counterintuitive to me.
This way, the low band gives you more coverage and the mid-band gives you more capacity. So the mid-band can handle more people connecting at the same time and more people, uh, like with more throughput. Uh, so your, your low band travels very far, but it's very limited in terms of what you can do with it. So calling and texting is really the limit of, you know, low band uh, frequency.
Whereas you can do FaceTime or Instagram Live or whatever with a, with a mid and high band. So, if you're like that, that kind of
Well, ours will have both, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, oh, and that accomplishes the goal of like, when there's a lot of people using it all the same time on holidays and big events, okay?
Exactly.
Sorry, I just, I'm not familiar with those terms, so.
Trust me, I'm, I'm not a uh, cellphone person either, learned a lot through this process.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How much of your propagation is now creating or creating is probably not there, how much propagation is covering areas that were not previously covered by any amount of cell service, do you know?
Don't know, it's
I mean, I assume a lot of that stuff to the south as you get away from town.
Right, um, I mean, I can tell you where I lose coverage with T-Mobile, like my personal
You don't mean it, it's curious.
The, the challenge is that there's no like public propagation map that you can obtain. Uh, the carriers are very close lit about that in terms of where they have coverage and don't, and they, they don't want that to get out there for obvious reasons, so. Um, you know, you can do your own propagation study or you can do your own analysis, um, but some of that, of course, is subjective, so.
And then once you put the towers up, do you have to offer tower space to the carriers? Are you required to do that?
Um, it's, I believe that actually is like a Forest Service requirement in terms of it being a neutral uh, installation.
Yeah, we, that's, yeah, through the Forest Service and our application and discussions with them, one of their requirements is that the towers remain agnostic and we don't just say we're building these for Verizon or whatever.
Isn't that the, one of our criterias, you have to maintain um, um, a space. There has to be a space available for somebody new to come on.
Yeah, eh, well, the rea- one of the main reasons that, um, you know, our guests and our locals, everybody's got different, not every, there's, we're all on three or four different cellphone plans or whatever, basically. And so we're trying to, we don't want it to be that if you've got Verizon and AT&amp;T that all of a sudden, the T-Mobile people are gonna experience the same experience that they do today. Um, or whatever it is, yeah, it's, we're, we're providing four outlets or four locations for providers at each location and that's, um, that's as much and more than most towers that I've seen.
Yeah, because there, there's really, I mean, any of the other players in the space are either a subsidiary of one of these companies or uh, they're just leasing uh, a spectrum uh, from them. So like Comcast, for example, offers their own mobile service, they're just leasing spectrum from Verizon.
So I found the section in the, in the code, um, co-location required. Each new tower shall be designed to accommodate one or more additional users' equipment.
Perfect.
No facility shall unreasonably exclude a telecommunications competitor from using the same facility tower or location.
Perfect. So, um, this is a map of the uh, Picken County Scenic Rideaways and uh, scenic view plane. So this is showing um, specifically uh, the roads that have been identified as uh, basically the scenic rideaways and then the the lighter purple, that is the majority of the map here, is showing the view planes that have been identified from those uh, rideaways. Okay, so if it's within the purple, you can see it from one of the uh, scenic rideaways as identified by the county. So we took all of the towers that are located in there and on uh, on, on those roads, you see blue, you see yellow, you see orange, and you see green. Um, and so those are the four towers, uh, those are four. The blue represents where you can see the Bell Mountain Base. The yellow represents where you can see the Thai Hack Base. The orange is where you uh, can see Highlands Base and Thai Hack Base. And then the green is where you can see the Buttermilk Base. So, um, yeah, basically that's uh, you can see that, we'll just kind of go through these one by one. So Bell Mountain is visible. Uh, the Bell Mountain Tower would be visible from certain sections of Main Street in town. The Thai Hack Base, it'd be visible from many sides of uh, eighty-two as well as, um, once you get on Maroon Creek Road and then a couple of spots on Castle Creek Road. And then uh, the Highlands Base and Thai Hack Base would be visible from this one spot here. And then Buttermilk Base from this one spot here. Um, when we go into the specific uh, renderings that we've got in a little bit, you'll see how far away uh, the Highlands Base is, how far away the Thai Hack Base is, et cetera, from those locations. Um, all right, so one, one at a time, so Silver Queen Gondola Building, so, um, this is the Sun Deck Restaurant. Where you see right here, this is the Gondola um, Terminal and the Gondola Line goes downhill, downhill is to the high side of Australian and uphill towards the Heroes Pod is this direction of Richmond Ridge. So the intention of these uh, two towers would be that they would barely peek over, they would peek over the, at top of the roof on the backside of the Silver Queen by roughly twenty-five feet. Why twenty-five feet? Each carrier um, is roughly, the antennas are about um, nine feet tall. And you need a ten-foot space per carrier, basically. And so to just get above the roof five feet and then ten feet for Carrier One and another ten feet for Carrier Two is why these towers are proposed at twenty-five feet above the building. They're above that roof line. The roof adjacent to it, um, right here is taller than the Gondola Building, uh, Gondola Storage Building here by about uh, eight feet-ish. And um, when we went out and looked at this, we primarily, um, the backside of the Gondola Building, unfortunately, is not the most beautiful building to look at. Um, if you will, so these cell towers aren't, aren't the worst thing in the world for the appearance of that building. And so what we really focused on was protecting the views from the sun deck, from the uh, the traditional, you know, the downhill of the, of the Silver Queen Gondola and protected the views of uh, Independence Pass um, in all directions. We previously had a tower that was in the opposite corner and it was eighty feet tall. And that did not do a good job and that was absolutely in the viewpoint.
Can you pull up the rendering of the proposed, the two model, all right? Do you have a rendering of what the eighty-foot tower looks like?
I do. Um, Eric, can you pull that up while I'm doing this and we'll bring that up when you're, you tell me when you're ready?
It's not a big deal, but if you haven't, I'd like to see.
No, we do, that's
The one in the packet says it's eighty feet, but it's on packet six, part six of the packet. Says it's eighty feet.
Yeah, the one that I have, it just shows the, the two poles, the fifty-two and fifty-six.
Okay, so this was from our site visit. And um, if you see right
That's me in the green shirt.
That's Mac, and there's Tom Newland, okay? And I'm standing in front of the, the sun deck where in the wintertime you would rack your skis. And um, this, so this is the ridge line, the, the view that was, that's you know, between the cables is pretty incredible, so.
So Max, five feet tall, six feet tall, excuse me. And, and the first, the first uh, panel, whatever we call it, it starts at five feet above the roof?
Correct.
Your height.
Yeah, that's Yeah.
And so then we've got twenty feet above your head is what
And so then we've got twenty feet above your head is what that, those towers are.
So that was, that was the original proposal, that was the eighty foot.
Is that, yep.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah. And then um, okay, so let's not do that. We got it here. So then we looked at moving it over. To right, if you can see Tom, like right here.
And so that's twenty-five feet above the. Yeah, I had him adjust the height of that.
Right, to capture the height of that. And.
And that would be, the one that you're looking at right there is the one further away from the restaurant.
So the other one is.
The other one would be.
Behind the.
Would be behind the Gondola from that perspective.
And I'm I'm now kind of standing in front of the patrol headquarters. Hmm, sorry guys. But over in here, there's a whole bunch of existing cell towers and stuff. And you can kind of see the orange flag on the rights, on the left side. Oh, and here's your base of buttermilk. But I'll stop sharing.
Okay, so what um. Just to start, what are the other factors that dictate the monopole height? Other than the amount of carriers that have to be fit on it, so like what? Why, what, you know, when you find out, alright, we have a fifty-two and a fifty-six, is that just because? You're getting four carriers on each and each of those, or what are the other factors on height?
Uh so one of the factors is there's a minimum height from the ground to the antenna in a location where people could be.
Right.
And so that is like eighteen feet, I think. And then um that's, that's pretty much the criteria. So if you're close to a roof.
Right.
Or something like that, if somebody's, if somebody has the opportunity to work there or go by, it's basically that radius that you're talking about.
Okay.
And then there's the vertical space between the two carriers and they have that, what was it, ten-feet requirement? Uh so that they don't have interference between the two.
And then you probably have to have a minimum distance between.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so these are, I believe, forty feet apart. I think that horizontal separation of forty feet is the requirement.
Eric had his hand up.
Uh Eric, oh, you can't share it, can you?
I was just going to share that uh older rendering, if you guys still want to see it, but if I can't share them, I can send it over.
Or I don't know.
And it.
Eric, would you be able to make Eric? One of the presenters?
Bear in mind that our scenic standards from the code. Are as viewed from the corridors outlined in the code, so that's Highway eighty-two. The map that that Mac showed, but when we were doing our site visit, we thought, you know, the Gondola is such a publicly visible piece.
For those, for those, you you talked about different colors. Actually, these are the Galvines Bowls because it's a big Galvines building.
Yeah.
And so that's, I understand it's a rendering, but that's sort of the color.
Yeah.
That's sort of the color of the of the tower right there, I get it, nevermind.
Okay, Eric, you should be able to share now.
This is the previous rendering for the Silver Queen Gondola site.
Can you zoom in a little?
Yeah, there's the.
Oh, there it is.
And then, yeah, show a couple of the other ones, Eric. Good. Yeah, so that, this is a good depiction, it shows the bottom antenna is roughly five feet above that roof elevation and then there's ten, twenty, thirty, forty.
So, right, and the reason why you had to shift them up closer towards the sundec is because the roof elevation. I'm guessing the smaller, now being fifty, you can't put them back in that corner else they're, they don't clear the roof as much.
Yeah, so the um it. Yeah.
Well. That location, when you're standing in front of the sundec right now, you have this uninterrupted view of the Independence Pass ridge line.
I think that one photo that Leslie showed that where the story pole was the eighty, it was forty feet above the roof. I think that that photo illustrates exactly why we moved it, that was, that was the, was a really good.
But moving it required two poles instead of one. Yeah, okay.
Chelsea.
Thank you, Eric.
Jasmine, you guys have any comments or anything right now?
I just noticed that the packet, part six, page four, showed eighty-foot monopole landscaping plan, but. But I think it's a picture of the fifty-two and fifty-six, so I think we're good, based on what you just went over just now, just was a little confused.
I think, one other point of clarification about this site is that um. You know, the the taller the pole is, obviously the 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 signal will propagate further. But the key here is that actually this is a critical site to cover the bowl. It covers the bowl and DT and because it's up on this ridge here, it's okay if it's not, you know, a hundred feet tall. That's not gonna have a material impact on the area that we want to propagate with our up signal.
I mean, my question is, I guess, two. Is first, how you guys feel about, obviously, the photo right here is like taken from. The little uh sunscreen water picnic table.
Correct.
Area, so you're kind of looking up at them. When you're uh going up the Gondola, you're gonna be, your view plane is like, if you're on the Gondola, you're another twenty feet higher, you're looking right at them. As you approach, like, that's what you're gonna see, was just like your guys' thoughts on skier experience.
Yeah.
I guess with that, which is outside the realm of the code, but that's something that, you know, that, you know, that's a big.
No, I mean, that that matters.
For a lot of people.
Yeah.
You know, and then my second thing is, you know, this board spent. A very long time dealing with the Pandora's Master Plan. And how, and I know these are two totally different projects and I'm sure when the Pandora's Master Plan was being worked on. And applied, this was probably in its infancy, right, so. But I mean, my thought would be, and I could be, obviously, completely wrong, which is very rare, but. How, if these towers would be, would have been. A better place would have, especially because I know for a direct view shed and direct, you know, if they really are meant for. The bowl, that there could have been a better spot. In the Pandora's area where there would have been in the trees away from the Gondola Building and had a direct view line towards the bowl. That's just a thought, not really a question.
So, two questions there, or I guess.
Yeah.
I'll address both, okay? Um first of all, yeah, uh. I I I think you'll see once we start going through all of them, like we worked with a company um called HR Green. Who is uh an expert in the field, if you will. And uh their first version of where they wanted towers to best be located to make the most efficient. Uh system is not what we have here today.
Right.
Cause they were in the middle of places, they were a hundred and twenty feet tall, they were like, you know. We then had to go back around, like, we're on version eight or whatever that is, all the towers work together. They cut, they do the goals, they cover the ski area, they cover adjacent areas, et cetera, but um you know. This Silver Queen one, in order to do the uh the mid-band and the high-band around the sundec. Which is, doesn't propagate very far, and then the low band, which as Chad was saying, really does an amazing job. Of hitting the bowl, hitting deep to Merity, Steeplechase, et cetera. This is the one location that could accomplish those two things. There was no other location that uh could achieve the capacity needed at sundec. And the propagation needed over on Highlands and um it's our experience that. From a guest standpoint, when you're going up the Gondola, you're looking around, you're talking, you're experiencing everything. Until you get to the last two towers and then you're putting your gloves on, you're getting your poles, you're getting situated, et cetera. And you're literally looking for, how do I not fall when I walk out of the city? So um it's uh, we agree, you know, yes, that is where you could see it. But I think over time, it's gonna be one of those things, it just fades away, just like the other ten antennas that you fly by at the exact same spot. Which are located next to Ajax Express, okay, so.
Well, I'm gonna say that these two are objectionable. I mean, this is right in your face uh from the sundec. And and I understand what you're trying to achieve, but we talked about or you talked about, and I'm hoping the next are hidden by trees. And backed by trees and those kind of things, because these are ridge line from the pictures I saw, we go back a picture. Those are penetrating the ridge line. Penetrating the ridge line is what the code says we're not supposed to do, that one and the winter one as well. That's very clearly to me, not in 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 meeting what the intent of the code is, I understand it is. So, and and we're gonna go through them and appreciate that.
Yeah.
These two here that I'm seeing, I'm hoping as we go through it, I'm not blowing away like I am on this there. Hoping we, they're more hidden like discussed, and the locations I've seen from the map, I think that they probably are, but. This one is objectionable to me, I'll stay right now, so.
And then why was this, why were with the Pandora's approvals? That um we were limited uh to only putting. Uh utilities that serviced uh the lift, i.e. power for the lift and comm lines for the lift. We weren't able to do anything else uh from a antenna standpoint or communication standpoint or other development, so.
Okay.
In that area back there, we're, whatever the the um, you know, the view platform. I have no idea how that works from a cellphone perspective, but that area is pretty hidden, I mean, you know, to me.
Yeah.
And and I'm not, I'm not a cellphone guy.
You mean behind the sundec where.
Similar area, it probably doesn't work as well down the front of the mountain, but. It shoots across the valley, that would be my guess. And it'd be hidden from, from, you know, the silver.
Yeah, I mean, my first thought when I saw the rendering was, you know, there are, there are a lot of these, which. They, when, they seem to blend in very well, but this one did seem pretty, you know, had sort of a. Star Wars kind of a look, you know, you could see where you're coming with the Gondola, but I guess. I guess what it comes down to is. If we were just designing this system and our only goal was skier safety, right? Or communications for basic level communication, whatever band is most effective for that. That just was for patrol, mountain rescue. Like if there's an avalanche or McFarlands, like if there's, you know, somebody gets hurt and trainers like. What, not so that somebody could be on Instagram while they eat lunch at the sundec. Or watch their video of them skiing on Instagram while they're at the sundec, right? Wow, how would it look different than this?
Could have looked different, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, I know it would, I mean, we went through this, we went through the whole process for the five G.
Yeah.
Picken County, so we learned, you know, we spent months and months, so we learned a lot about like what that looks like and, you know. I, I mean, that's, that's, that's my big question, I guess overarching question, this is like, if the, if really the only goal was not. All this other stuff was just for good service, so if someone's hurt in in a tree world, whatever. That there's service everywhere, how does it look different at the top of the mountain than this?
I I can't comment to how it would look different, I'll have to defer to Chad on that, but it it is. The service across the hills is one of our stated goals and in highly populated areas, uh additional capacity. Is another one of our stated goals, so.
There is, and there's.
Yeah.
And there's no cellphone connectivity at the sundec. Uh particularly, I think, for Verizon, uh there's a small.
Broadband or with, you know, isn't it, I mean, within the sundec, I could log on to your.
Log on, yeah.
You can do wifi.
Within the restaurant, there is service through your, whatever it is.
Right, and 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 that's appropriate.
And that's not requiring these towers. That's, that's line broadband or whatever the other term it's, right?
Yeah, that's wifi.
Wifi, yeah, yes.
And in terms of like, if you were to move the towers, I mean, we would just have to do a propagation study to say what type of impact that would have. It's hard for me to say.
We hear you.
Yeah.
And um let's move on to the.
Uh, quick question though.
Yeah, listen.
What, what was your year that you were proposing to install in Gondola, twenty twenty-five?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Alright, um so Bell Mountain Base, so this uh drawing you're seeing here. Uh shows the top of the Little Nell Chair, the bottom of the Bell Mountain Chair. And uh the proposed tower would be roughly in this area. So.
You're not telling me that you're taking that pitch right there out of skiing. I can't ski Niagara down there.
You can ski it.
Disappointed.
You can, you'll be able to ski it though.
Okay, good.
The uh, we're actually working with Holy Cross associated with this.
It's a good.
To the the power pole that's right there, we're working with Holy Cross to uh ferry their line. And then this tower would be roughly in the same location or similar location, you'd be able to get through there. Um so that, that is what we're talking about, this is extremely well-hidden from the. A town, this is extremely well-hidden from the majority of the skiers um that are skiing on Little Nell. Um that are skiing uh the skier's left side of Niagara and as I was just pointing out, that's here's right side of Niagara, it does go by. Um so this is roughly how it would look. Um again, that is that power pole that is located there, this would be adjacent to that and the cabinets would be down low.
So I I spoke up last time that that I thought the space was objectionable, I'm also gonna speak up and say this is not in that. Realm of objectionable, this is what I'm hoping to see. And I'm also hoping to see, you know, the the pad looks pretty big when we talked about it, that's why I asked about the footprint, I did not study each footprint. Um but it is a concern of mine because I do see that line right there, so.
I also.
This is what, this is more of what I was hoping to see, so I'll go ahead and say that.
That you do.
Yeah, this, um you you've used the topography, you've used the trees. That sort of micro island there and coupled it with the existing power pole infrastructure, so, and it's. Not affecting the skiing, it blends in nicely.
And this location is within um alluvial fan, geologic hazard and. Not out of our hundred-foot setback of Riparian Corridor with the, I think it's the Spring Gulch, actual Spring Gulch.
So it's.
But.
Yeah, this is the uh Spar Gulch.
Sparkulch.
Comes down uh this area right here, you have Tom Bingo, and then we have a retention pond over here. None of the utilities, none of the construction, et cetera, would be. Uh would be crossing those, um and anything that needs to be done from a BMP and construction mitigation. Perspective would be how this would be addressed.
Right, and what what our code a lot enables us to do is. We found that this is already a previously disturbed site. Um with regard to the war, it's far enough from the water drainage, the water courses. Um and then if you saw, we have referral comments from Call of Geologic Survey about these. Specific areas that are within our um geologic hazards and they felt that. What the ski company outlined in their application for development in the, in this geologic hazard, particularly the alluvial fan. But also the fact that um the ski company is constantly maintaining the areas from, you know, hazard. Avalanche hazard perspective and things like that, that they did not have a problem with the site.
Does the uh, do the four uh cabinets, do they need to sit at the base of the, how far can the four cabinets be from the base of the town?
Uh, sure, they're they're roughly about five feet away from the base, or I guess.
Because looking at that, you know, the Aspen trees are gonna come back, you know, from my perspective, if you you put it not right at the base, but. Lookers right.
Yeah.
Back inside there and it can be screened, you can landscape, you can plan it out. back inside there and it can be screened, you can landscape, you can plan it out very quickly and easy, as long as they're not following having to surround the base of the tower. But surrounding the base of the tower, you know, there's six by twelve pads all the way around it, um, you know. Changes the, you know, it makes it a big, as you said, it's a, it's a giant, it's a giant footprint.
Yeah, no, we could.
I have no idea about the requirements as far as, you know, by the way, you know, there was that bridge, maybe it's protecting the cables or it's a construction machine.
Yeah. No, we can, we can take, I don't have that in my presentation today, I know it's in the application, but um, I, yeah, we could absolutely look at that, they could, the the four pads could be two side by side, just below it, it could be on the looker's right, it could be one below, one above, I'm not not quite sure, but yeah, we would, we would absolutely keep that, that uh in perspective, so. Um, here's another viewpoint uh from over at the uh top of the little nail chair. And there's a little red arrow that's pointing down, right? Here. And just because you can't see it from that location, um here is from the bottom of the bell chair. That gives you a little better perspective, and again, we're hoping uh to be able to relocate the Holy Cross uh infrastructure there.
Can I relocate those two spruce trees there? They're in the line.
It's good. Oh, the two new ones, yeah, no. We can, what, all the screening you see today uh will be reevaluated uh during building permit applications. Uh, we're just trying to show in some locations that uh we're, we're, we're basically attempting to screen the um the cabinets, and if that's deemed not a priority in locations that are pretty out of the way, then that's fine by us.
Cause there's some sort of something back in there and already appears, so go ahead, we'll move on.
All right, so then we have the uh top of Bell. And the top of Bell on here is on, if you continue up this road you'll get to the, the, the top um as you're skiing by uh on to get to base Bell, back of Bell, um you go, that's, that's the lane you go in the winter time. Um, you go that direction. So we have two views that will be seen, one um from over at uh Lazy Boy Ski Run. I'm over here, view one, and then view two is from just uphill uh on that access to the top of Bell Chair. So here it is, um, this is actually, yeah, there we go, so there is the tower. It's roughly the height of the tree stand around it. Um, it's got the copper sulfate finish, cause it's around, surrounded by ponderies. Um, and you can see really well here, kind of that skier's going, perspective going by gonna go in down that little slot right there, and then you can see the top of the bell chair in the distance, and you can still see the Silver Queen as well.
And that's a sixty foot pole there?
Yeah, that's sixty foot pole.
Go back to that, the second rendering, this first one, it seemed, that's the one where it's a little more shit uh aggressive, and I don't know if that's just the rendering, cause Yeah, it blends in with the tree height, but this one, it's a little, cause it is, it's not really top belts in that saddle. And so like, if you're at the top of six, you're probably just staring Yeah.
And so this one
Sixty foot somewhere fifty two, that has to do with uh coverage, I'm sure, right?
Uh, that has to do with uh the coverage, um, uh, they're definitely when we went and made uh fifty two, that's in the location where the tree stand was a fifty foot tree stand, and then we challenged the propagation team, if you will. Um, here, the tree stand adjacent, Leslie and I measured or I measured them when we're out on our site visit, and the adjacent trees are sixty feet, so yeah, there's something wrong with this rendering, we can get it updated.
We have forty eight, but sixty is, in the render, and sixty is taller than the surrounding, and once again, it breaks the
Yeah. Okay, um, so this one is uh, we're looking at the Ajax Express chairlift here, and the FIS chairlift over here. So this would be below the lift maze of Ajax Express. And uphill uh or kind of side hill, if you will, to FIS. Kind of like the way that the contours kind of work across there. Um, this is uh off the side of Bell there, and um so we've got two viewer three views that we're looking at here. Uh, so one is coming down uh International and coming uh from, from up high, if you will, from where the work road crosses. The second will be from where the lift maze is at Ajax Express, and the third would be lift maze at FIS.
And the yellow mining claims, so those yellow triangles are on that, I mean, it's
Yeah, that, the yellow are, um, so uh, those specifically are forest service property. So this is showing that this is on private land.
Yep.
Um, and outside of those wedges and Aspen Mountain. I like to describe it, it's somebody dropped a shard of like a pane of glass, and it broke into a thousand shards on top of the map. And they decided that's forest and that's private at some point in time, so. Um, here we go, so this is across the way as you would be skiing down, so this is uh you can see the tower as it's located over here. Um, from the lift maze. Unless you got way out on the edge, which uh the rope doesn't quite take you that far. Uh, you you'll be able, if you're the very edge of it, you'll be able to see the top of it. Um, where this photo was taken, it should be under dirt there. And then um here we are at FIS looking across and at the tower as it's located. So this specific tower is um adjacent to the uh Spar Gulch drainage. Um, and it is uh just uh adjacent to uh the diverter box that um is installed on Aspen Mountain, that diverts uh the flows from Spur, from Upper Spar, uh the, the majority of those flows go, have historically gone over into Kino Gulch. And then Spar Gulch, uh I think it's eight percent of the flow from that point down goes down towards the city. And that's something that happened, uh pre-sky area it is, it is continued. Um, but the uh, the tower could be constructed without uh the access, as well as the utilities could be constructed without um, uh interference to the, to the ditch, it's a very manufactured ditch, if you will. Um, uh, it has been for years, and uh we've crossed it with multiple utilities, snowmaking, power, fiber optic lines, copper, et cetera, in the past, and it would be uh similar to that, and the pad for the tower itself is outside of the um, the, the ditch, uh but the, if, but within the um, the
One hundred foot
The one hundred foot zone, yeah.
Again, this is an area that um, is already heavily disturbed.
Okay, Ruthie's base, um, this was one I kind of described a little bit earlier. Uh, we originally had it close to Ruthie's Restaurant. Um, and after uh not being able to find a suitable location near the restaurant, um, we found, cause it's just sort of steep everywhere around there. Um, we were able to find a, a good spot towards the top of, this is uh the top of Aztec. And this is Aztec Flats, if you will, um, which it's described as. So top of lift one is here, Ruthie's Restaurant is there, bottom of Ruthie's Chair is there, so this is uphill of all of that. And it's in this really nice flat spot. Um, uh, just off the, off the summer road in the, in the east there. So the adjacent stand, this is what it would look like um from the high side. And um, so the, it is right at the edge of a, of a wildfire hazard area. Um, as is defined, which covers many of the tree stands on Aspen Mountain. Um, this is something that uh we would, uh, I guess um, we're, it's, it's a low, it's defined as a low hazard area, and it's immediately adjacent to the ski run. Um, I forget what the fire department said.
I talked to um Jan Legursky today, I didn't get um uh in-depth referral comments uh during our referral comment period, but I had a long conversation with her today about the conditions of approval that we have in the resume with regard to wildfire hazard, and she's re, she is comfortable that our typical wildfire standards in our code do not apply to this kind of development, we have um some conditions in the code that talk about limbing up um the trees, uh but with regard to installing uh more Mugo pines, for example, as screening, um she's not worried at all about uh wildfire hazard with a pole, with the steel pole, concrete base, and even the cabinets, I asked her to look at the cabinets, and um together we looked at the cabinets, she hasn't had a chance to give me, she was gonna put her comments in writing today, but Jeffrey did have comments, which is what spurred me to um force Jan to give me some comments. And um his comments were, you know, conformance with wildfire hazard, um and again, in talking, and Jan had a chance to look at Jeffrey's comments, and she said um, from a wildfire hazard perspective, they're not concerned. It's not, you know, residential, it's not a combustible residential development.
Doug, any thoughts on comments on this Aztec? I mean, my comments are gonna be consistent, yeah, I'm, I'm, my only thought on this one is, I'm sure you guys have talked to somebody in World Cup course crew, like Jimmy Hancock or somebody about whether this interferes with existing infrastructure, and then my only thought with this is like, you can see in the photo there's a camera tower there, that's like the, one of the best shots of all ski racing. Um, and it is coming around that corner, and it's just something to think about. And I don't know if it's, I mean, that shot gets them coming up, and then they pan, they go over off the edge, and it doesn't look like it's in the way, but it's just something to think about.
Yeah, and we did uh verify this against all the existing uh World Cups, snowmaking infrastructure, et cetera, um. Yeah.
All right.
Zach, are you talking about the visual impact from a camera shot or your?
It's a
Okay.
This is a television camera stand right here.
Okay.
Is what, is what Zach's saying. And so, like you said, yeah, this is uh, this is the right-hand turn where the skiers are always off kilter. And it's usually extremely zoomed in on them, um, but I can, I can easily go back and look at some old World Cup footage.
I, I worked course crew uh, you know, forever, and I did that. I was on the, ran the banner crew, so you know, all, it's all about branding, and every, working with the film crew, and every shot that gets the branding, whatever the sponsor is, whether it's Audi in the background, or, you know, every shot has an exact branding package in it, you know, so it's just what that looks like.
Okay, uh, Buttermilk Base, um so this is one of those that was visible from Highway eighty two. Um, in a very specific location, basically like right here, um, we've got some because of how close this is to the base, we've got eight different views that we'll look at today, I believe, so, um, the uh, here's the first one, so this is, this is one of those that we tried to keep. Uh, we had room for two shorter towers, and so this is of a similar type of uh style and arrangement that um we looked at up at Silver Queen a few minutes ago. Um, so two towers that would be roughly twenty-five feet above the top of the existing uh vehicle maintenance facility right there. And currently, there is uh one shorter cell tower that is located over on this side. Um, and that has AT&amp;T on it, or is AT&amp;T on the roof?
Uh, I don't want to miss AT&amp;T and Verizon are over there today.
Yeah, AT&amp;T and Verizon are currently there, this would allow for four different carriers. Um, so from the parking lot, as the guest would be approaching the facility, um Buttermilk, you can't, you won't be able to see these towers. Um, from the county parking lot, you would be able to see the tops of them, we believe. Uh, but they, you're pretty far away at that location. Uh, here is the one spot at eighty-two that you could see it barely, um, you're pretty darn far away from it. Um, here's at the intersection, and you've got at least uh during the fall, you're able to uh be blocked by the tree there. Here is just off of Owl Creek Road, um, we believe there's appropriate uh vegetative screening. Here's uh another shot off of Owl Creek Road, as you're coming towards it, again, pretty well screened, but in vegetation. And then um when you're looking at it from in an Aspen uh, that's, it's covered by the building, uh by Buttermilk Mountain Lodge, and then as you're looking at it, um, from going down uh government there, uh the ski run adjacent, um, pretty screen screened well, if you're on the top of the jump and flying over it or whatever, you know, you'll be able to see it. Um, but not very well, so that's, that's right above, so that's Buttermilk.
And the Buttermilk Towers are the closest to a residential property, which is right on the, right on the other side of the, of the vehicle maintenance.
Yeah, you can see the two closest houses, the Target House and then the other one
There's probably some sort of oh, about how far that, you know, because of the waves or whatever, I'm sure that that's covered by another organization, I guess.
Yeah, uh, the distance, yeah, for that is covered through another organization. And uh we're uh in compliance with county code regarding the distance from the tower to the property lot. And this tower, these towers, I should say, um, are also within um FAA regulations as far as the height of them because of their proximity to the runway. Um, and we are in compliance with that as well.
And I uh referred the application to um Picking County Airport staff and asked them to really focus in on these two towers and let us know if there's any concerns, and I haven't received any comments.
Okay. Next is Cliff House, um, so the tower locate, proposed location is over here on the right. So this is the top of the Summit Express Chair, the top of Tyhack Express, and the Cliff House Restaurant, and the PHQ. Um, up there, so as you can see with this aerial footage here, this is a natural opening in the tree canopy. Off here on the left, this is not within a, a skiway or whatever. Um, popular tree trail, anything like that, uh which Buttermilk's famous for. We've got two views um that we feel are most appropriate, cause you can't see it from the top. Um, so where do people congregate, out in front of the Cliff House, and as you're getting off the Summit Express is kind of the two most important spots that we felt. So here's uh our guest services structure, this is right in front of the Cliff House building, and here it is over on the left. Um, it's maybe a little overstated, it could be a little more tucked in, in, based on reality, but um we're the, the height of it, the color, et cetera, I think it shows well in this rendering. Um, and then from the top of the Summit Express, uh you can see where it is over here, it doesn't break ridge, it, um, again, pretty good with the tree line, and it's pretty tucked in. Uh, Tyhack Lift Base. So this is the one that you will be able to see the most from Maroon Creek Road, around the roundabout, Highway eighty-two, that was in the, the view plane discussion that we led with. It is a very far way away, um, and we've got multiple, um uh, I know we took pictures from the roads and I uh Eric, do we have some additional renderings that we did from there, or is it basically, it's so far away that all you Uh Eric, do we have some additional renderings that we did from there or is it basically it's so far away that all you see is an arrow?
I think that there's one Google Street View in this slide deck that kind of shows how far away it is. But we we probably have more photos.
Um so we will get, we'll show one view, the uh right when you're going by the football field. At the high school, right before you take the left as you're headed up towards Highlands, that would be the most visible. I would say from uh from the rightaways and the scenic protection. Um so yeah, so this is one of those that um. It looks like it's right in the middle of this tree stand. This is an old work road for one of for. Whether it was uh one of the old Thai Acklifts or there it was one of the Eagle Hill lifts, et cetera. Um and so there's already a cut through the trees. Uh there's and it goes all the way through and it actually has a switchback in the middle of it. And um this this tower would be located uh kind of at the confluence or the intersection of of those roads. So it's got a flat space. It's got plenty of room for towers. It's part of the thicker stand. Um so it's it's not one of the spots, not like the root or anything like that where you're doing the tree skiing over there. Um yeah, so we've got three different views um that are from Javelin and uh. Uh from um is it Buckskin? On view three. So. Here we are um over from Javelin looking up. Here we are. Uh Buckskin looking across. And then looking across again. And so it's. This is, I think, the best view of it's as it's the height of the adjacent Aspen trees. It's a little taller than the adjacent everything. Oh, here we go. This is kind of that closest spot from Maroon Creek Road. And so this is showing the approximate location and it would you would be able to see it. Um if you're looking for it, but it's not gonna be something that um overpowers your view.
And Cemetery Lane to the roundabout is a. Straight shot on on that location.
Yeah, this is uh one of those where we reached out to Five Trees. Um who's over there and we felt that that as far as the neighborhood is concerned, their view of this one and they are. Um chomping at the bit for more and better cell coverage. So they were okay with this. Aspen Highlands Base. So this is uh. Uh the closest tower that we have to the Highlands Base area. Um the exhibition lift is right here. The Thunderbolt Lift is right here. Um we are in the tree stand uh that is. Uh basically the second tree stand up from the uphill from those lifts. This is Thunderbolt Limelight. Um and then so we took views from. Uh uh patio at the Ale House. We took views from uh the lift line. We took views from uh basically. There are just a couple more views from the run um is what we're looking at here. And again, this is on a uh. A traditional work road that has basically been revegetated. So it's a nice flat, big, wide area. Um that is located out there and uh it's a, yeah, it's. Uh we think it's pretty well screened and um this again, we felt. Uh compelled to reach out to the HOA there and um got the very similar response. Uh from them and they wrote us a letter of uh support. So the tower here from the base area, you can see it popping up over the trees a little bit. It would be the uh patina color, but it's it's pretty far away from uh the exhibition lift base that's today. And then here's from Ale House Deck. And you can see it again. Um but again, pretty far away. It you'll be able to see it, but it's not gonna dominate the terrain. Um then just a little closer on the ski hill and then how most people will experience it skiing down. Um as they're headed to base. And then we uh it looks like we have one more. This. Man, Eric, you're stumping me. This is eighty-two?
Yeah, that's right before the roundabout.
Okay.
Yep.
There we go. So I guess you can see that very tip of it from the section of eighty-two. But again, extremely far away. All right, um Highlands Vehicle Maintenance Facility. Uh so this is the tallest tower. That is being proposed, um a hundred feet. It is located. Uh here's the top of the exhibition chair, the bottom of Loge. Chair and Merry Go Round Restaurant. Um it's located off of Riverside Ski Trail. And the vehicle maintenance facility is it's it's immediately adjacent to that facility. The adjacent tree stand, um the the vehicle maintenance facility is kind of in a little hole. And the adjacent tree stand, which is up on the ski run, is a little taller and those trees are roughly a hundred feet tall. So uh that's why we're proposing a hundred feet in this location is because the adjacent vegetation allows for it. Um and because of the fact that you're in the hole in order to get propagation on the other side of the ridge, that's why it needs to be. The height that it's proposed. Um and then our viewpoints are from the guest services kiosk or the Merry Go Round Restaurant, kind of between those two. Uh from the lift line at Loge, uh from uh the uh catwalk out to Thunderbolt. And from uh Riverside. So you'll be able to see it from Merry Go Round, but again, kind of in line with the trees and the ridge. Uh this is from the lift line. You'll be able to. Uh if you're looking through the trees, it it will be a little bit visible depending on exactly where you're at. Um this will be from below, you won't be able to see it. And and then here's immediately what it'll look like as you're skiing by on the trail. And then that gets us to Cloud Nine Chair Top. So the top of Cloud Nine Chair is here. The restaurant is here. And so this would be below the restaurant. Um and kind of just tucked around that that hill, if you will. This would be towards the top of that uh tree stand. That tree stand was. Um one of the areas that was uh. Uh studied for or defined as in the wildfire um area. Uh as well as this area is um uh a currently being studied. By the Forest Service. This is on Forest Service land as far as environmental impacts. And um this is within a designated Big Horn Sheep. Uh area and the proposed mitigation around that is to uh uh limit construction to outside. Uh Big Horn Sheep Cabin Zones uh or Times. And so uh the Forest Service will. Get specific on the dates that they would recommend for that during their environmental review, but we expect that it'll be uh July. Um no, no starting construction earlier than July.
Ours is May fifteenth through June thirtieth.
There we go. Thank you. Um and then we have, uh so we have a view from uh the restaurant. From the top of the Cloud Nine Chair and then um from a little bit above on the ski run. So. Here is uh from the restaurant and. That's not, we we need to do a different battle with that one from a little closer to the restaurant so you can see it because. It is tucked below, but the forest isn't that thick in that location. So it's it's a little more visible, but it is over the hill a bit. So it's um. It's, it will be visible from the ski racks. Um and you'll see timber behind it when you're at the ski racks at Cloud Nine Restaurant. It is uh also visible from the Cloud Nine Chair Lift as you're going up for probably about two seconds of the ride. Um without, if you turn your head, you'll be able to see it more, but when you're going uphill, it's it's screened fairly well. Um it's less visible from the top of the Cloud Nine Chair and then it's visible um. You know, same kind of thing. It's it's within that canopy line and it would be visible from um the roundabout. And this just is the showing the Big Horn Protection Zone. So. And then that is the wildfire area. So those are the towers. Um thank you for your time and happy to continue this conversation right now.
Make sure your comments, discussion, questions?
I can start. I'll start by saying that having cellphone service. I don't think should be an expert, an expectation. I'm sure everybody in the room and ninety-plus percent of our guests. Have been to the room wells, the Pine Creek Converse. The Top of Independence Band, Rudy, and none of those areas have cellphone service. So the health, safety thing is. Not really high on my list. The ski patrol has been there for as long as the skier has been there and are taking care of. The people that are there. So that said, I think that it relates to um. Zach's comment earlier about the level of service. So for me, having a high level of service on the mountain is not a priority. That's my opinion. In the restaurants, those kind of things, that's a different thing and that can be handled differently. So that's gonna be my first override to comment. The second is, as the service gets better, I think we need to think about unintended consequences. You know, if you start to have distracted skiing as soon as you have. You know, as soon as there's a lot of five G or all this service out there. Then there's gonna be something in your goggle that's gonna tell you how fast you're going or where you're going or what you're doing or whatever. And it's like distracted driving. So the unintended consequence of too good of cellphone service in my perspective. Is a less safe environment. Um so I so those are just some general things. How I feel about the need for robust cellphone service on the mountains. That's so um that. And then the others, I think that I think that I stated it at the very beginning, the gondola building towers, I found offensive. I thought they were. Penetrating the original. We went right to the bottom of Bell. Bottom Bell was a forty-eight foot tower. It fit really well in there. Every other tower is sixty feet tall or more and every other tower felt tall to me. So, you know, the code is twenty-eight, sixty is two and a quarter times higher, sixty is tall. Um and so that's where I come out on on the proposal.
Chelsea?
Oh, thanks, Zach. Um. I appreciate Doug's comments because I I share a lot of the sentiment of um. Not necessarily wanting better cellphone service. I actually broke my leg in front of the Merry Go Round in twenty eighteen. Ski Patrol, and you know notoriously Merry Ground has terrible cellphone service. It had terrible cellphone service the time I broke my leg, but Ski Patrol was there within minutes. So it wasn't an issue because I wasn't like out of bounds or anything and it was no big deal. So. And I I don't like it when people are on their cell phones and. The gondola talking on their cell phones. I don't want to listen to other people's conversations. So I I do agree with a lot of what Doug said, but I'm not sure that's what we're. Just because we don't appreciate cell phones interfering with our experience on the mountain doesn't mean that. That's what they're asking us for in the land use code amendment. So I would. I would, I would encourage us as a committee to. Uh evaluate the aesthetics and the impact on things that are really important to this board. Over the long period of time, which is breaking the ridge line and evaluate the statistics with regard to that. And then also ask Leslie to kind of clarify, what specifically are you asking us to do here tonight? Because you're asking to amend. The la- the master plan, but for what purpose and what exactly are we approving the way that these look? Because they're subject to change in the next go-around as well. I'm not sure that like what they presented tonight isn't going to be modified in the future. And it'll look completely different when it's actually constructed. So what can we do tonight to put parameters around what we may or may not. Approve that requires things to, you know, main maintain the values that the board has always. Supported, which is again, not breaking the ridge line and other aesthetic issues related to preserving the natural space. That was in the original master plan that now you're asking us to modify.
Well, I think um um there's. Two parts to what you're considering and approving. The first is um. You know, the master plan limits the height of structures to twenty-eight feet. Uh in each of their master plans. Um so first, they're asking for towers that are greater than that height. Um through the master plan process, you can um. You can evaluate the greater height, the height over twenty-eight feet and determine whether that twenty-eight. The um each of those heights in each of those towers is appropriate in that location or not at all. Um then the other aspect is the activity envelope and site plan review, which. Brings into those kinds of aesthetic values that you're looking at, the biggest being the scenic impact. Our code um talks about scenic impact as viewed from. Those uh major uh roadways, those major corridors. However, again, you're looking at um an amendment to each of the master plans and the master plan considers. All those uses that been have been approved for the mountains and how those uses fit and are appropriate. Uh within the master plan. So I'd say it's it's, you know, the. The location, the height, the amendment to the master plan and the site plan review are really integrated here.
Are we changing all the individual master plans that have anything to do with the ski rec area? Is that, am I getting that right?
Three of the master plans, yes. Yeah, you're amending that for very site-specific. Uh location of these transmission sites and the characteristics of each of those transmission sites.
Granting approval for the height of the tower and the location that.
In that specific.
For those specific towers and. They're like all towers that that height and.
No, the this is activity envelope and site plan is a very site-specific. Plan. So so you have a height and you have a finish. And you have a specific location. As well as a specific location for the trenching. Um to get to each of those towers where um as part of this, you're um. The end result in this would be specific activity envelopes that define. Um not only the sites, but the trenching to the sites.
Did the caucus areas have any comments on? These? None of them? Were they referred?
They were.
I wish they would have commented so we could have.
Yeah, let me interrupt and then you can um the the public notice. That is, there there is going to be a mailing and posting of signs. That level of public notice um. Uh will happen for the B O C C meeting. So this, we've required the ski company to uh mail a public notice to every single property owner within three hundred feet of. All these boundaries.
Is that a long one?
For you. So we're doing a two-step review for all aspects of the development that's in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission right now. Are they approving the activity envelope and site plan? Are they just or? Or are they making a recommendation on all the on all the aspects of the application that will eventually be approved? Or not approved by the B O C C?
Yes, the latter.
I'll just clarify them.
Yeah.
So it won't come back before. So it won't come back before us again?
Not unless there's something that you want reevaluated. And I heard, I heard two things from you guys so far, a reevaluation of the towers at the gondola building. The location of the towers at the gondola building and I heard um a um tighter, more detailed. Footprint at the base of uh the bell chair. Given its, given its location. And I, and also um. I think, I think um if you guys um wanted to do a site visit. The site visits are very, we're, my, our site visit was very helpful.
From my perspective, the site visit without a story pole is.
Yeah.
Not, it's all about the height.
We only had, we only did a story pole at the gondola building.
And that's my, I mean, and and they are rendering, I understand that and they're imperfect, but but it's all about the height. I'm sure that. The the trenching and all those other kind of issues, ground is gonna be repaired, that's all gonna be fine. But the height is, the height is the height. And once the height is determined, it's not gonna be short ever.
Unless there's some sp- specific areas that um. You'd like to see.
Papa Bell Mountain.
Story poles. Yeah.
Notes said it should be forty eight cent. I mean, I I made a note on every one of them. And essentially, virtually everyone, in my opinion, was too tall for the surrounding trees. I mean, and if it's a sixty foot tree, it should be a fifty six foot tower. Because the tree is like this, the top and the towers, how big is the top of the tower? What's the radius, the top of the tower? It's gotta be four feet around or something. It's it's a big square thing. I mean, I. It's a pretty big thing. It's a, it's a big thing. And so. Uh, from my perspective, having the, if we go out there with a. The laser and the tree is sixty feet tall. And the tower's gotta be fifty six or fifty four or something. It can't be as tall as the trees. Because the trees are tapering in and opening up and the tower is this big square. The tower is this giant square thing. I mean, go to the top of Winter Park, there's one up there. You can drive around Colorado and see these things. Um, right. And I think Zach's point, point early on was very well spoken. Are we talking about life safety, which is level, and I don't know what the level is, the lower level of surface? Or are we talking about? Playing on your, you know, the high surface, so you have all these other things that the cellphone was. Does now that it didn't originally. Life safety is a different question in mind, in mind, I think, as Zach correctly. Identified early on.
Jasmine, do you have any comments?
Um, I don't share some of your concerns about the visibility of these poles. I think that the applicant has done a very good job of citing them and coloring them. In a way to be as obtrusive as possible. I mean, they're gonna be seen and. One thing I've learned from all the years on both city and county P and Z is. Things never look smaller than they do in the plan. They always look bigger when they're in real life. So I'm taking that into account, but um. I've been thinking to about the thing, the the issues that um Zach and Doug have raised about. The level of cell service and whether or not that might make a difference in the thought and the size of poles that are being used. Um, and so I really have to do some more mulling, because at first I really thought this plan was pretty innocuous.
Yeah, we lost you. Jasmine.
Jasmine, we lost you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to say that I, my initial. Look at the plan made me think that it was probably as unobtrusive as it could be under the circumstance. What I didn't question at the time was the need for that particular height. Depending on the level of service and that's something I really need to think about a little bit more.
I have no idea if the height has anything to do with the, with what we brought up. So in in general, the height of the towers is roughly five feet above. To your point, Doug, above the tree canopy. That is something that um.
The top of the towers are five feet above the top of the tree canopy.
That's, that's what the intention is. Um, and that was through talking with carriers, talking with um H R Green. Talking with the Forest Service, the telecommunications department, et cetera. Um, that is. Kind of a industry standard, if you will, for towers and screening them. Um, now, that said. You know, there are. I'm not saying on all of them, but there may be possibility to. Take a look, we'll, we'll take a look at the towers between our first meeting and second meeting here. We'll see what we can.
You've already decided you're coming back.
I've told you of two meetings. That's what I read in the.
No.
Okay, sorry.
But the.
Yeah, anyways.
You're assuming the P and Z is gonna continue.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. No, I I was not, I, I read, I read that somewhere. Maybe I mis- misread that somewhere. But um anyways, so that's something that um we're willing to look at. Like, we, we agree. We don't. Cell tower, like, I disagree with the um, the the necessity for public safety. This and and I I personally, uh, I was out of Beaver Creek. And I was at a run where a ski controller would not have gone anywhere close to me and I broke eighteen bones in my back. Friend right there, I got their cellphone coverage because literally I like. Was face down in the snow and couldn't move. Um, and like, there are. Thousands of acres on our four hills that. You, it literally would be, I would have been out there for an additional hour just waiting. That's what we're trying to avoid. So I, that public safety component and having the communications everywhere is a big deal, in my opinion. Um, but as far as the heights of the town and us trying to do everything we can to minimize the impacts. That, absolutely, we're all, we're all on the same page there. If we can look at reducing the heights by. You know, if we're five feet above right now, which is what the designers told us we should be, we can take a look at at reducing the heights to try to get just below the canopy. Um, that's, that's something we can do and the unfortunate part of of this that they may come back and tell us is. Hey, you reduce the height of that, you gotta add another tower somewhere. Because frankly, we, we've done this dance. They, like I said, they started off with. Probably like eight towers, uh, a hundred and twenty feet tall in the worst locations possible and we ended up with this. Thirteen towers in eleven locations and that's attempting to find the sweet spot, but I'm not saying that we have. Like, I think it's pretty damn good, but maybe we can.
I appreciate the work that's going in and selecting the locations. I think that there's been an absolute attempt to make them as as um. But as un- as hidden as possible. But but every one I came to, and I understand it's rendering, but I think Jasmine's point is well, is well spoken as well. It's always bigger in real life than it is in a render. And so, um, you know. And as I said, I made a note on every single one about about the height. And I just thought that the sixty foot towers felt tall.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead, Chelsea.
Uh, sorry, I don't mean to change the subject on height, but I wanted to ask another kind of question before it escapes my mind. Um. Um, because we keep, we keep talking about carriers and I I noticed one of the pages in the um application mentioned, signed by Rana Dershowitz. Uh, talking about the ownership of the property. And she mentioned that a couple of the parcels or one of them is partially owned by the county. It's the county's a part owner in this. When the land that will be like subject to the placement of a tower. So the county's not one of the applicants.
There are. I, I'm assuming that that one, uh, is that the Ajax Express?
Can't find it again in the millions of pages, but I do remember seeing it. Um, because you have just some sort of sworn statement about ownership.
I can look into that.
Sure. Well, I guess I, where I'm going with this is um. Earlier, you mentioned that this isn't a lucrative investment for SkiCo. But eventually it might be. Um, and so I'm just kind of curious what your projections are. I'm guessing. And I'm not sure if I'm even allowed to ask this, but from a profitability standpoint, the the carriers weren't interested in doing it unless SkiCo provided the infrastructure. SkiCo is providing the infrastructure and then I eventually will be paid back at some point and then the carriers will rent back. The spot on the pads. And will that be a for-profit venture at some point where the carriers are paying for this?
Maybe.
Done that math? Is this something that actually will be, you know?
I, I mean, there's.
Lucrative to this company?
We, we sure hope so, but there is a lot of um unknowns at this point in time with regards to. Income and the cost of construction going out, et cetera. It's one of those things that.
Maintenance.
Um, maintenance costs, yada, yada. It's, it's one of those things where we are. Um, we're hopeful that one day it will produce a profit, but. That's not the main intention of it and so it frankly hasn't been driven down.
This an insurance driven thing? Like you'll, your insurance will decrease by a substantial amount that'll pay for SkiCo's investment. What is the? Did you, does anybody know, aware of that? Like with respect to? The insurance is carried by SkiCo and whether it'll diminish the premium by a substantial amount if there's more cellphone coverage?
Ever heard of that one?
Oh, yeah, I don't know. Uh, I, I can't speak to that, Chelsea. I don't, I don't know about that.
I'm just wondering how the math works. Um, and I feel like it's a fair question to ask if this is a. Something that will be an income stream for SkiCo. By placing these in our view, view plane um. Over the long term.
Well, yeah, I think it's a good question. I mean, I, I know that. From what I understand, and I only know a little bit about it from. A no- Verizon tower that was put on some private property is that there was some sort of. Equity share in in the, the. The income creation off of the tower was based on the amount of traffic or calls that went through the tower. And that's what Verizon, you know, that's how they, the tower creates income and I could be totally wrong about it, but. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure the, the carriers are. Paying to use the trip, to have a spot on that tower and that. There's, and then the income is based on the amount of traffic that goes through the tower. Does that sound right?
Yeah, and and I have experience with clients as well who've placed them on office buildings in downtown. Like metropolitan areas and it's, it's very lucrative to place them on top of your office building. So. I'm not sure if the structure installation is the same for the upfront cost, but that's a fixed cost and it's paid off at a certain point and then it's. It's gravy from then on. So I'm just curious how much and if that projection's been done, can it be disclosed to the public? Who'll be impacted by?
Yeah. Um, the ski company is not, I mean. I, I, I have really high regard for the ski company. I always have. Um, but I, I don't think we can ask and I also think that, you know. Previous deal in the ski company, they look at the income, the cost to make. Yeah, never.
I guess, I, what it comes down to. For me, and I think this was a good point Chelsea made, we really have to. Understand what. And what's under the purview of our board, what's our responsibility? And you know, that's basically whether we want to amend the ski rec master plan to. For the construction of these towers, right? So.
At the height.
At the height proposed. And so out of these thirteen towers. Um, or out of the eleven locations. I, I don't have a problem with. There's, there's three of them that I I have a pretty serious issue with. So I think there's a, there's. A lot of them that have been placed really well. And that are shielded and the, the actual, so this is just, you know, what, what our board is responsible for. There are three towers, the top of the gondola, um, the top of Bell Mountain. Are the two main ones that stand out for me. I just don't think that they. Deserve uh. The where, the, the place, the placement and the height, I think, is. Out of context for the zone. So then, outside of what our purview is, so just to speak personally is. I'm sure all of this and the need for these towers. I'm sure all of this started with, with um. Like customer feedback, right? And customer review. And, and skiers coming back to you and saying, hey, this is the thing that I want more. I want to be able to send emails on the gondola. I get to the sun deck and I, my cellphone doesn't work there, even though they don't know that. You, there is wifi there and they just have to log on to it, like, and I've been skiing on that mountain for my whole life and I know the spots where there's good. I know the cellphone service at Bonnie is terrible. You have to get on the wifi there and it's really slow, right? And then I know the bottom of the bowl is really bad and that's super dangerous, right? Because. There's a lot of accidents that happen there. And the bottom of the bowl is the place where you're gonna like have a skier come down and call the patrol. And need them there, right? So there's places that are a concern. My only. Feedback, I guess, would be. I would be really interested in knowing, you know, that the customers that. Give you s- feedback about, you know, this. I mean, I've never done a feedback skier survey, customer survey in my whole entire life, right? And so there's a, there's a lot of. Customers and and people who ski on all four mountains. Who are going to be a very shocked when they see the whole mountains are littered with. Cellphone towers. And there is. You, you know, like my original question is that. What's the, what's the level of service that we need for skier safety? And what's the level of service that we need for these customers that are giving you the feedback? That they want to be able to, you know, send emails on the gondola or. Have the phone at the level of service that they like it when they're in New York or in L A or in San Francisco. Right? And that's a different customer. That's the customer that's giving you the feedback. There's all these other customers, clients that. Don't have any problem with the way it is right now and, and they will have a big problem with. The, the way the mountain looks when, when they see the towers and literally like Aston Mountain. I mean, it's the crown jewel, you know, to have that where you come to the top of the gondola and there's towers right there. And then you ski down to Bell and there's a giant tower there. And then you get down to the bottom of Spar and there's a giant tower there and. Ch-ch-changing the look of the whole mountain. And those are the people, you know, there's a lot of people you don't get feedback from. And, and I think a lot of those skiers. Are looking for, you know, they're going up on the mountain to get away and sort of enjoy nature and not be on their phone. And so there's gonna be my, I mean, my thought is. There's gonna be a lot of negative feedback. From the skiers that you haven't talked to, would be my guess. And that's just my, you know, personal. Comments outside of the purview of our board. So. I'm wondering, you know, the sundec already has wifi service. So when you get to the sundec. The cellphone service is terrible, but you get on the wifi and you can sit there and have lunch and make calls and do all that. What does it look like when? We have those towers that are, that are not there so that the sundec can have five G service, right? That, does it look like there's a tower that can be placed back behind the snowcat, you know, maintenance building back there where no one sees it? And we are covering skier safety and doing that, but we aren't providing, you know, five G service for the sundec. Like, is there sort of a, a split here where we're not completely affecting the way the mountain looks right now? But we're still getting a high quality skier safety deal. So that's my thoughts.
So, P and Z, do you, would you like to continue the discussion asking the ski company to study the sundec? And um, study um top of Bell Chair. And come back with a better, uh, tighter footprint for the uh base of Bell? And come back with a better uh tighter footprint for the uh base of Bell.
Does how does that how does that sound to the board?
As as well. The one at Cloud Nine is pretty obviously breaking the viewpoint, the viewpoint, ridgeline.
Ridgeline viewpoint.
Cloud Nine, ridgeline.
The four that I marked that that I felt were appropriate. Bottom of Bell, Island's Base. Island's Maintenance, the hundred foot tower there seemed to be fine, Butter Milk Base. Those four, I said, no problem. For me, um. Top of Bell, I thought was fine. Cloud Nine, I thought was fine. Ruthies was kind of borderline, but too tall. Bottom of Three was too tall. Cliff House, too tall. Tyke Base, too tall. And the rest of them, I said, other than those four that I mentioned. I thought were, you know, were too tall. It's my opinion. One one member.
Papa Bell, Cloud Nine, Ruthies, Bottom of Three, Tyhack Base.
Yeah, I agree with the Ruthies one as well. And of the rest of the list.
Cliff House. Um. Would you um, would you like a site visit? And maybe we do story. Those, those um, one, two, three, four, five, six?
I I, well, you know, I I like site visits. Um, so I think that that that'd be great. I think that without without a story pool, and I think that. And I don't want to build six giant story pools, but I think we need a representative story pool, meaning not a. Piece of PVC with sixty feet tall, maybe the top that's going to be kind of the diameter that we're seeing in the picture, at least one. And it maybe doesn't have to be sixty feet tall, but, you know, to to show us a a story ball that's. Two inches around and we're going to put a four foot diameter tent pole there is not representative of me. And I don't want to, and I'm not the same, Mac, you need to do that on every location, but we should do that in one location, I feel, so that we can really see what. Is being for lots. And I don't know how you do it.
Yeah, I don't know how we do it either, other than just to look at other cellphone towers that are representative of the same style.
Right.
Um. And there is a representative one of that, you know, the bottom of Buttermilk right now, there's one off of, you know, next to.
How far?
Beelum right now.
Nothing in snowmash is that far along. Are they doing, are you doing snowmash this year?
Yeah, we're building snowmash uh in September.
If you have photos of these cellphone towers at other ski areas as well.
They're different, at least the ones I've seen, they're different styles. They're they're older, more intrusive, if you will, but there was. Back when we were looking at the types of cellphone towers, um. That the these seemed the least intrusive, least offensive out of out of the bunch, if you will.
Yeah, I mean, I I was just trying to think of where I've seen ones this style, like I know there's a big one like this at Breck, but, you know, I.
Yeah.
You think of like when you like other mountains like Jackson or Sun Valley or, you know, you ski around. I don't, I'm, you know, and I've skied like recently and I haven't seen any sort of cellphone. Tower infrastructure like of this size in magnitude. So, you know, I understand like, you know. When you're the first ones to do it. You know, and then maybe that in five, six years, when you go to all these other ski areas, it's all they're all going to have towers like this, but.
Yeah, a lot of the ski areas, at least in Colorado, that that I've been to and seen the towers and done visits on, um, they. Like Mail has good coverage, Breck has good coverage, Copper has good coverage, Keystone, et cetera, and they they have towers that have been built. Um, you know, either by the ski areas and they look a little nicer or and they're more hidden or they have they did it. A little further back in time and they're just, uh. You can tell that not as much stock, they were done by third parties, not as much stock was put into it.
So. Go ahead, Eric. It'd be really um. Formative, I think, to see some of those actually in the field where they're trying to do essentially what you're trying to do, buy them. Not break the ridgeline. I mean, I'm not assuming that they've done a good job. I'm not guaranteeing it, but you know, not break and and be it. Essentially the height of the trees. You know, we don't, we don't need to see pictures of bad representations, right? I want to see what we don't want, but we're not trying to achieve, but. Are they able to, are they able to pull it off? Because then it's a picture instead of a render. I know it's in different locations and everything. You know, it's just over in Utah. Didn't see any. I wasn't looking, but Park City, Deer Valley. Snow Basin, whatever it is over there, Snowbird, Alta, didn't see a single one. Maybe they're there and they're hidden and I wasn't looking for them. If that's the case, that's straight.
They're there.
Because that's what, that's what, that's the goal, I think, man. As Zach said. You know. We don't want to, we don't want to have have it become an eyesore. Because the because there's.
So we agree. So, um, we're happy to, I think before we um. Do a site visit with a story pool that's showing it, I think it may make sense. Leslie, um.
Sorry, I'm looking for a new date for you.
It's okay. I think it may make sense for us to uh take a look at uh six towers that were just or six locations that were just talked about. And see if there is any possibility to uh to decrease the height, to get under the canopy. Um. I, you know, we can take a look at those and, you know, the, we hate to fall into the um. Ignorantly into the world of unintended consequences, so. We'll evaluate that and then we can get back with Leslie. And then if there's something to take a look at from a field perspective, site visit, then we can schedule that. Um, and then we can meet again.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So. Um. I want to, I just want to summarize what we want, what I heard you guys. Again. Uh, reevaluate a location and uh maybe a possible change in the kind of service that's being provided at the top of the gondola.
I don't think our locations are.
Location, location, and. Which could drive the location. Um. Better footprint at uh Base of Bell and then.
Look at, I didn't look at this, but it's drawn there. It's it's on, it's probably in one of those drawings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
The one that seemed to be, you know, in an area where.
Yeah, I I think I think that one's simple. Like, there's there's means of. Of putting the cabinets off to the side, protecting the the skier lines, or at least most of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just in the end going to want to have that better documented.
Sure.
Okay. Um, then um, top of Bell, Cloud Nine, Ruthies, Bottom of Three, which is the. Um.
Ajax.
Ajax Express, Tyhack Base, Cliff House. Right?
Yeah.
I didn't miss anything.
Oh, nine.
Cloud Nine, I got Cloud Nine, one, two, three, four, five, six.
And I think story pools for the top of the gondola are very easy because you can put them on the roof of the building and then they only have to come twenty feet up. You know, so that then that's pretty.
The building is the problem and that.
Yeah, what I'm hearing is that no cell tower on in the building area. Maybe there's a different solution or a different location is what I'm hearing, but let's not. Mess around with some towers on the backside of that. That's what I'm hearing tonight.
That's what the picture that was represented here showed. I I thought, I mean, it would be towards the bull side back in the trees someplace.
Well, yeah, I was just thinking logistics, you know, to see what a story pool looks like there, but that's a that's sort of a just in a.
Yes.
Look like logistics wise, it's, you know, two twenty push story balls that you can put on the roof of the building.
Yeah, that's.
I would, I would like to see what the. A sixty foot story pool looks like at that Bell Mountain, top of Bell Mountain, you know, area, because I think it's going to be. I think he, I think it'd be good for you guys too, because I think it's going to be very. Visually imposing from the top six from. Way more parts of the mountain than you, you know, on the lift at Ajax Express, like, oh, you know, I think there's going to be. Your top of Ruthies, top Bell, like your, I think there's going to be. A the the dumps where you're looking back across, I think there's going to, you're going to be able to see it from, it's going to break the ridgeline in a a bunch of different places.
Yep. Um, just as far as the the logistics of a story pool, one thing I learned um from Tom is that his. Uh, he he can't do anything over forty-five feet, I believe. Maybe it was forty-eight feet or something. It's not sixty, I'll tell you that.
Yeah.
So um, that could be problematic. What we did um to measure the trees, we have. Uh, different ways to measure the things around it, so that may be um. Easier, if you will. I don't, I know that easy is not necessarily right. I'm not saying that, um, but. And maybe we can put it on the top of a truck or and something like that. I'm just, I don't want to, I don't want to overpromise and get expectations. Out of something that may not be very feasible.
Absolutely.
So you need to continue to a date certain.
Vote on a continuance? Yes.
On your motion.
And um.
And you can define the scope of what you would like to see brought back to you, or you could leave it open pretty wide. It just depends on how much direction you want to give to the applicant as to what you'd like to see. It sounds like Leslie's trying to narrow down that stuff for you right now. So.
I'll make a motion that we continue, it's not, we can't wait to continue the hearing. Whatever we get to here. Um. To review the height of the identified areas. I think that locations, well, other than the tower, I got. Um, I think that the, so a motion to review the height of the six identified twelve towers. And the location of towers at the top, the sundec at the top of the gondola.
Yeah, I agree. I'll second that motion.
And you need a date certain. I think August twentieth is too soon.
Thank you. Yeah, that is too soon.
I think it's too soon. Um.
We've got a lot of work here, so.
We have September third, which is open. Um, unfortunately, September tenth is a special, which is a lighting code. September seventeenth is a comp plan. Um, October first is Landy's Code Amendments and the next open one I have is ten fifteen, so.
We could do September third if that's okay with everybody.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Doug to uh for a continuance for this meeting. With the um guidance that we've provided. Uh, we have a second uh by Chelsea. And we will take a vote on this motion. Um, Jasmine?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
And I will, yes.
So thank you for the feedback.
Thank you. Do we have any other items on the agenda, Bonnie? I I would uh take a motion to end this meeting. But move.
Second.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.